Hey.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November eighteenth meeting of the Village New Paltz Planning Board. Tonight, after our regular administrative business, we will have two public comment sections, two public hearings, as well as one application review, followed by our update of the draft zoning code. To begin with, I'd like to look at the meeting minutes from our October twenty first meeting. Were there any changes for these those? In that case, could I get a motion to approve the October twenty first meeting minutes?
So.
All in favor?
Oh, I wasn't there. I'm just.
You can still vote if you're comfortable.
Okay.
All right. Next up, tonight, our those board and Ulster County Planning Board liaison is not here. So we do not have updates from him. Were there any updates from the Environmental Policy Board?
It's still pretty much nonexistent.
Okay, so looking for members.
Well, yeah, definitely looking for members. I think maybe we should reach out to Shade Tree since they're they got all their members and they can help us with policy, but right now, whatever, we need a whole new.
Right.
Well, their board.
Are there any updates from our Director of Planning and Zoning?
A couple. First, just a reminder. Please finish your four hours of training hours by the end of the year. For the public, we will have a planning board opening as of January, and we have two vacant alternate seats. We also have a zoning board opening, and we will have one vacant alternate seat as of January. So anybody who's interested in joining the Village Planning or Zoning Board, please reach out to me. My email is planningzoning@villageofnewpaltz.gov. Communications, you received an invite, and I'm gonna let Emily just speak to this if the board has any questions. It's from Woodland Pond. They will be coming before us for a proposal in January for new construction of new facilities at properties they've recently acquired for the South. They're having this meeting about the environmental questions and things that have been brought up about the whole area in general. It's not specific to the project. It's more about the environmental and how they're addressing environmental. But as far as I'm concerned, you can attend the meetings as long as you don't talk amongst yourselves about the application. And I'll let Emily fill through the air if she has anything to add.
Yeah, I think that's right. From what I understood from Woodland Pond, they rather than come and present a project and have get into a point back and forth, they wanted to first take the opportunity to invite people in to talk about the the wetlands and environmental resources there and what they've studied and what they've learned and kind of have some informal conversation with the public. So that's the purpose of that they're holding this meeting before they formally come to the planning board.
Can I ask this this meeting, however, is not only for planning?
No, it is for anybody from the general.
It's mainly for the public, actually.
So we just got a special invite?
Exactly, yeah.
Correct.
And where is it again? It's a it's.
At Woodland Pond.
It's at Woodland Pond. Okay.
I can print you another.
No, I saw it. Yes, it's Monday, Monday at five.
Yeah, and you certainly have a lot of connection. It could be in our community, so if you can help spread the word, that would be great.
Yeah, I think they really want to.
They really will like to hear from people and present what they're doing and before they get into the application process. What they're trying to do is is deal with questions before they get into the review.
Sure.
Unfortunately, Zach, I do not have a town board, a town planning board. We did today receive a letter of request, and I put it in the administrative. If you want to move it to the end of the agenda, that's okay, too. This was for the thirteen Water Street. He had his engineer surveyor find the level of the floodplain, and they determined that the building, even the ground floor, is above floodplain level. So they're requesting to remove that one condition and put it in. You can certainly defer any decisions till next meeting if you want, but I'll leave it to you. If you want to talk about it now, if you want to put it at the end of the agenda. He's not going to attend. I told him he didn't need to. He just suddenly.
Oh, he is here.
Apologize. So since he's here, I'll leave it to you.
Sure, we can we can look at that briefly right now. So given that we had that special condition based on the idea that it was potentially in the flood zone, I'm open to removing it if it's, you know, not not going to be an issue.
When you say flood zone, do you mean like the fifty year or the one hundred year or what?
Correct.
But I think it says there.
The flood elevation.
The hundred year.
Yeah. And certainly.
Can you explain to me what the condition is that we're being asked to?
Yeah, I printed a copy of it, but it's a resolution of, I'm sorry. Shall be no residential use or building mechanicals on the ground floor to avoid potential flood damage. The ground floor may be maybe used for storage at the outcome of construction. He had it measured, and it turns out that it is four point six feet above the base flood elevation, the ground floor. So it is well out of the flood zone. The FEMA says one foot above flood elevation is out of the flood zone.
I would suggest running it by the engineer. Also, we have engineers for, but to absolutely.
We don't have to make a decision, because I can defer the decision to next meeting, but I wanted to skip the request to you.
So that would just be a motion to refer this to our engineer?
Can I just ask one question? Where was like, where were they going to be if they weren't on the ground floor like?
The mechanicals?
Yeah, where were they? But where are you moving, asking to move them from to the deck ground floor?
The second floor. So it was just the mechanicals that were put on the ground floor because we're four and a half feet below the base.
So you're not going to use the ground floor for residential, any other use, just the mechanicals?
And the storage and the and the.
When we reviewed it, we were uncertain what the flood elevation was, and he didn't have the number. So we set that condition out of the fundamental caution about the mechanicals. But now he's had it surveyed, and we haven't had two, so.
With the with the new engineering resource we have, we can probably turn this around in days, right?
Yeah.
But I'd feel more comfortable with them just taking a quick look at the applicant's engineer's letter and fact and just giving us giving it even intermittent in between meetings, resolving it that way rather than us reading someone else's engineering letter and deciding on something that like that in real time. And it's not even on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I think it's a better precedent to that.
If it's urgent, this can happen in days, but I don't think it should happen.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, it's kind of urgent, yeah, so.
Mike, is it reasonable to think that we could get the engineer to look at this in forty eight hours?
Could they make a resolution, Emily, that, you know, subject to confirmation from the village engineer, removing that condition?
Okay.
If it works comfortable.
That's if that's possible, then and we don't have to wait until our next meeting to turn this around.
I'll just get a letter from the village engineer that says that this is accurate and then that condition can then be removed with that.
So in that case, could I get a motion removing that special condition subject to confirmation from our village engineer that everything's right?
And just to clarify, we're removing it only as to the mechanicals, not the residential use, right?
Correct, just, yeah, yes, the one.
So move.
One second. All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you all. Thanks. Next, like to move on to our public comment section. If anyone's here to make a general public comment, not regarding Forty Prospect Street or Twenty seven, twenty nine Main Street, please come up or please sign in.
And I think there's nobody in the line. Yeah, there's nobody on the line.
Okay, so nobody's.
I just came in. I'd like to make a comment on the.
Okay, that's that's coming up. So if there's no public comment, I'd like to move on to our first public hearing. But I get a motion to open the public hearing for PB twenty five, twenty four Forty Prospect Streets. Second, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone signed up?
Nobody signed up, but Mr. Beck.
Please come up.
Yeah. This is the last meeting, and I have looked at the property, and I don't quite understand. It's a property. A lot of people don't understand the part of the maps. How he's gonna build it. The land goes, got a big peak here and a valley, and then another peak. How? And it's a shale ledge under there, because I live on the shale ledge. And I know where it goes. They don't understand how you build a house on top of that. I don't know if I can get an answer to that or not. But that's what I'm wondering. Besides, all the trees being cut there.
Okay. That's that's all. Thank you. And I'll just, you know, add that there are detailed site plans online where you can see where they're gonna site them. Okay.
But it still doesn't explain how you're gonna deal with those mountains. I'd like.
No, stood. Well, we will be reviewing the application later on in the meeting. There's no other comments for Forty Prospect Street. I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And next, could I get a motion to open the public hearing for PB twenty five oh eight for Twenty seven, twenty nine Main Street?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
All right. We have a number of people signed up. First person on the list is David Ness.
Please come up.
Come up, because then the microphone picks you up better.
And the chair. Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
I am David Ness. I've been in town for twenty five years. I am the former Chair of the New Paltz Chamber of Commerce. I've served on that board for fifteen years. I am a yogi. I've been doing yoga in this town since two thousand and two. And I don't know how many of you, some of you I know have been in town for a long time, but there's a tremendous number of businesses that were yogi, yoga studios, starting with when I first did yoga in the sanctuary, but what was the Sanctuary Building, which has a very small parking area. I never could accommodate everybody in that building. Then there was Jai Ma and Shangri Yoga, which were above Jax. Both those yoga studios were opened around two thousand and two, two thousand and three. Jai Ma moved. And then there were two yoga studios there for coexisting ten years, maybe more. Rock Yoga, which was up in the Asian Fusion Building, had a very large space, very adequate parking in that building, even for that restaurant, that whole parking area in the Asian Fusion Building with the residents, with the main floor, the different stores. It's really tough to find parking spots there. A lot of people, thankfully, with yoga in this town, there's a lot of people who walk to it, whether that be Sui students, village residents. Obviously, if there's a parking issue in the lots that's assigned to the building, people, if they want to go to yoga, which a lot of people in this town do, will find a place to park. Or they're gonna walk, and it could be residents from Sui, like I said, and village residents. There's also Stellan Yoga currently in existence on the street where Barnaby's used to be, right around from the sanctuary, from what was the commissary. They have no parking. Shangri Yoga, Shangri of New Paltz, Jai Ma was on Main Street above Jax. It was meager parking. No parking lot, but those businesses were able to sustain themselves for a long time. So if the issue is really parking at the Wells Fargo Bank spot, along with that parking lot here for the village, yoga is yoga is a, it's not a full-time business. It's not there from eight AM to five PM. They have morning classes, then people leave. Classes an hour, hour and fifteen minutes. Then everyone goes away. I'm not sure what the plan is as far as an afternoon yoga. It's kind of tough, but they may want to do that. But again, they'll have a class twelve, one o'clock. People will be gone, then everyone leaves, and then they'll come back for a five, a six, or a seven o'clock class. So it's not all day long. So that's, those are my thoughts. I'm in support of obviously having another yoga studio in this town, especially a hot yoga studio, which is kind of unique. And if the landlord's willing to build out that place and make it habitable and nice, I'm sure they'd be a very successful business. That's all I have to say about that.
The next person, I don't know, Carla Craft.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you. My name is Carla Craft. I've lived in the city for ten years, and I am now in transition to moving here, and I'm also a yoga teacher. And I want to be fully in support of of the applicant and this opportunity to bring, as David said, bring hot yoga to New Paltz. It is actually quite an attraction, and I think that it will bring other other yogis from around. I think it'll be a boost to the community. I think it will bring, you know, some economic gains. I understand the parking, but I think David already made a really great case about the cadence of classes, and I would also like to fully support this location. Again, as a as a yoga practitioner and teacher myself, the ability to link a gym and a yoga studio is quite powerful. Yoga and weightlifting is a is a great combination, so I think it really it's it the location is perfect, especially across the street from Rock and Snow. I think it really brings this great kind of community, and I do know that the applicant is also a supporter of the community and has been as, and I think that it's already looking to be a successful gym, and bringing yoga will even make that make that building much more successful. So thank you for your attention, Emily.
Person, is it Vouch, A C H?
Hello. My name is Rick, and my last name is Vouch. I'm the former owner of the Gilded Otter, and my wife owns In Good Taste Wine Spirits on the same piece of property that the gym and the proposed yoga studio and the bank are on, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the parking situation. And what I have been led to believe and understand, the board is a little apprehensive because they say there's not enough parking to accommodate the bank, the liquor store, and the yoga studio. But in reality, the problem lies with the village, in my opinion. We have plenty of parking. We really do. A lot across the street, a lot behind us, all those things right there. The problem is people abuse the situation. People come, they go to the post office, put their car there. They go to go have lunch at P and G's. They dump their car. So it it the spots that we have are not being used for the businesses that are there that deserve to have them. And people, it's it's an ongoing war. So, you know, it's a battle. And the landlord, like, did not want to have to do this, but he had to start towing cars to put the word out, hey, don't park here because these are for my customers. And it was, whatever, it wasn't a nice thing, but word finally got out, and if you come through there at any day at two or three in the afternoon, just behind the place, not talking about the lot on the other side of the street, there's plenty of empty spaces all the time. You know, people come and go at the gym, wine store, you're in and out in three to five minutes. The bank, they have two ATMs drive-through, which are probably be used the most. They have another one you can walk up to and two inside, so I don't think you're gonna see people. Nobody goes into the bank anymore. You could do it all at the ATM unless you need a certified check or something. So, you know, the chances of somebody parking there for the bank for a long period of time are slim to none, but the spaces were available if if they are. And when I say I place place some of the blame on the village is because they, there's parking where they have the municipal lot, but the failed farmer's market over there, which is just a black hole in the middle of the thing. It should be reconfigured back to the way it was. You can still see the old lines. We have ten spots right there, at least, that could be made available for the general public who wants to go to P and G's or wants to go up to Starbucks to grab something, you know, and that would eliminate the problem of people dumping their cars and going. And the other situation is, I'm still not sure why, but the landlord was told we had to take six spots out of his parking lot across the street. Doesn't make sense to me, but I don't know the particulars involved with it, but if those spots were there, they'd be more available for the customers and for the proposed area. And, you know, I think that there's, you know, more than enough spots for everybody when you sit and study it. You know, like I said, you really just have to take a ride through prime business time, twelve, one o'clock, four o'clock. There's there's lots of spots because people know now, don't park here, don't do this, don't do that. And I wish, I don't know what control you guys have, but if somebody could get that black hole reback into a parking lot, it just make it look better. You drive by and it just sits there. It's not attractive. Some cars generating a little bit of money, okay, as though maybe it'll help some of the situation. So that's all I would say is, you know, the illusion is, it doesn't look like there's a lot of parking, but the reality there is, it just has to be respected and used the way it should, and the village needs to try and remedy your few situations, even if it's ten more spots. Well, that's ten more people that won't have to, you know, have arguments with the landlords, property managers and what have you. So thank you for hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before our next one, I'd just like to remind everyone of the public comment guidelines. We have a lot of people here tonight. We'd like to ask everyone to keep their comments for three minutes at max. Try to avoid repeating the same points you hear over and over again, and stay focused on the proposed application. Thank you.
Can I just add that sidebar conversations are distracting. We're trying to listen.
Yes, please take that outside if you need to talk to someone. Thank you.
And if anyone is, there's a copy of the guidelines or the, not guidelines, but the rules that the planning board set, the public hearing over there, if anybody is interested in looking at them. The next person signed up is Mara. Is it?
Give it a try. Give it a try.
Lilias?
Lilias, that's close.
Lilias. I wasn't sure if that was an I.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's my handwriting more than it is the pronunciation. Okay. So hi, I'm Mara Lilias. I owned Rock Yoga from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. That was in the Medusa building, what we was talking about. It was a good business. It was a profitable business. It brought a lot to the community, I believe. Closed because COVID, a lot of businesses did. I will just, I like had a bunch of stuff, but I'm not gonna say a lot of it. So I think it'll bring, I think it'll bring a lot of benefit to the community. I think I would like to propose that I could do incentives for walking or biking. Definitely, we could have incentives with the gym. You know, obviously, we'll be we'll be one big business. I have a I have an online community of over six thousand people, so like, I think people want this business back. Yeah, I think that's all I'm gonna say, so that I don't repeat anything. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next person means again, P U T E R. P U L E O. That's okay.
So I won't repeat all the parking stuff because we're enough of that. I've known Mara for eight years. I've been a yoga student in the community since about two thousand and five or six, and we miss that community that was built up, that started in two thousand and twelve. And many of us who are here were permanent fixtures, and we miss it. There is no substitution for it, not locally. We're driving a half an hour, forty minutes, maybe more. It's too much, and like Mara said, she's got six thousand followers. They all want it back. I'm not saying six thousand followers are gonna show up all at once. That's what we're look what we're looking for, but it would be absolutely amazing to bring it back and it would be profitable, successful business once again. So, thank you.
Well, next, is it Emily Panzer?
It's Himali, but right with the knowledge. Good evening. It is the evening. I'm Himali Fohia, and I'm a New Paltz resident and a homeowner. I'm not gonna repeat all the things around parking. I just want to say that I support the application. I'm a current student of Mara's, and you've heard from some other of our current students, former students. We want her back in the community. We're desperate for it. We really, really want it. This is a perfect place. It's so ideal because it's in a gym. I mean, we're not gonna repeat it, but just to say that I support what was said about the connection between the gym and the yoga studio. And you've heard her say she's willing to work with zoning, planning, village, town, whomever, to help manage any of these challenges, whether it's an incentive for walking and biking, or she said, or whatever that is. So if this is approved and there is a challenge, which I don't foresee one, based on the previous comments, if there is, she's someone who's gonna work with y'all to manage that challenge. And so I just want to support the application, her as a local business owner, and remind all of us that there's obesity epidemic in America, and we need more spaces where we can have movement and the community together, and this is definitely one of those spaces, so always a good.
Next is Raj.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for the time, everyone. My name is Raj Pandya. I've lived in the town of New Paltz since two thousand and eleven, and I'm in strong favor of the proposed yoga studio in the Wells Fargo Building. As people have already said, the instructor Mara is absolutely fantastic. I'd like to add that hot yoga is something that we don't have a lot of or any in this area, and so this brings something different that the other yoga studios are not doing, and I'd like to say that the power of community is incredibly important. I just started going to yoga, like, two weeks ago. different that the other, uh, yoga studios are not doing. And, uh, I'd like to say that the power of community, uh, is incredibly important. I just started going to yoga like two weeks ago. And I'm Indian. And I didn't even know anything about that. And I'm like, wow, if you can bring someone like me into this, you can bring, uh, the community in. And New, and New Paltz is the perfect place for this type of, of thing. So I'm, I'm in full support of this studio, um, in the Wells Fargo building. And I'm, I'm extremely confident that, uh, Mara and all the rest of us can work around any challenges. Thank you for your time.
That's the last person we've signed up.
It's like pretty much, yeah. Do you wanna?
I believe I already got it back.
Ryan Ursel.
You were, and my apologies. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Uh, so batting seventh, I'm gonna try not to repeat a bunch of stuff that people have said before me. Um, but I'm unique to this situation in that I helped open NP Rock Yoga with Mara in twenty seventeen and I managed the studio under her for a few years, taught alongside her. So just wanted to speak to how ethical of a business owner she is, how good it was for the community. Um, and then my other, I guess, unique position to this topic is that I work at the wine shop In Good Taste Wine and Spirits. That's in the same lot as the, uh, the gym and the proposed yoga studio. Um, and it's been mentioned that there is plenty of parking in the village, um, and on side streets. But I also just wanted to comment on the specific parking lot itself on the lot in the gym. So for the last two weeks, I know it's a relatively small sample size, but, um, the gym has been open for the last couple of weeks. And for those two weeks, while the wine shop has also been open, I've, I mean, my entire job is just basically looking out into the parking lot every day. And, um, pretty much at all times, if there are not people who are dumping their cars and leaving them there, um, specifically like if it's not weekends and weekdays, when I know people are not dumping their cars, the parking lot, I think is generally like twenty-five percent full. So it mostly is empty. So I think that even with the bank open, there's still plenty of parking potential in that specific lot. Um, that's, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, now that everyone signed up, my apologies.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else? Would you like to come up here? Please introduce yourself.
Sure.
Uh, yes, please.
I'm gonna spell it for you. First name is Krupa, K R U P A. Last name is Garach, G A R A C H H.
Thank you.
My name is Krupa Garach. Um, I'm here to express my strong support for Mara's yoga studio. I've seen firsthand the care, the professionalism, and the community-minded approach that she brings to her work. I've moved to New Paltz for about three years now. Um, and last year I had a baby along with, I can name maybe like twelve or fifteen other women in this community who've had a baby. And Mara is the only yoga teacher who has said, you can bring your baby to class. And that has been huge. Um, and so I just wanted to add that and just mention that it would be, you know, really healthy, positive space for residents of all of New Paltz. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Autumn, A U T M N E, Cro, N I N.
Sorry, spell it one more time.
C R O N I N.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Autumn. I moved to New Paltz in twenty eighteen and, um, didn't have a car then, still don't. And at that time I moved here, I knew I loved yoga. Very quickly I found Rock. Um, Mark finds like probably some of the best yoga in the area and hot yoga specifically is very niche thing. The closest place currently is Kingston. Um, and when in twenty twenty-one Rock closed, I started taking the trail ways twice a week to go to Kingston to do high yoga. Um, for me at the time as a student, and I know many other students who don't have cars, um, this style of yoga is very niche and very hard to access. Um, and Mara's a very welcoming practitioner. She makes it affordable. She allows students to like work within her means. I was a work trader for her. Um, yoga's just very special and I think that this would be a great addition to the town, specifically for people who don't even, you know, worry about the parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, anyone else that would like to, yes, come on in.
Chris Owens. Well, my name is Christopher Owens. I'm a former member of the Historic Preservation Commission in the village. I'm also co-owner. Sorry, I have a little co-owner of Cresta Magic on North Front Street. Um, I'm here to advocate for Mara because she is an indispensable member of the community. Um, she, first off, it's a business that left in twenty twenty and is trying to come back. Like, we see the the storefronts and everything out there, the general enthusiasm of town as well. This is a person who has a built-in community that has proven successful in this town for years on end. Um, not to mention she fuels other businesses. It is such a community, we usually go out after. We would go to Huckleberry, spend lord only knows how much, um, after sweating out our entire life. Um, and then not to mention in other ways, she supports other business owners. Uh, Cresta Magic got its first commission from Mara to do their logo for Rock Yoga. That's directly pouring money into other businesses, uh, owners' hands. Um, and there's no shortage of collaboration that she's willing to do, which is just a testament to how I think even if there are any hurdles in this process, she's very much willing to work for them. Um, just cannot stress enough that she is a gem of a person and she needs to be back doing business in this town.
Thanks. Okay. Um, if that is, everyone who wanted to make a public comment, uh,
Just for the board, there were four written comments that are in your packets.
Okay, thank you. We have those on the record. Review those as well. Uh, could I get a motion to close public hearing for, um, PB twenty-five oh eight?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, moving on to our first, uh, application review, uh, like to have PB twenty-five oh eight, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, Main Street, come on, please.
Nobody wants to hear about the parking?
Oh, they've been towing that lot for decades. It's a way of making money. They've been towing cars out of that lot for decades. It's a way of making money. It's, it's.
I have a lot to say about the parking.
I think, um, well, I'll just say like, I'm not sure what the community was told about this application, but, um, why don't Mr. Joseph, you review it for the, the audience here so they understand what is being asked.
All right. So the concept is that we have more parking than is required um, for the existing businesses per the town. Uh, and we developed parking lot to accommodate the, um, addition of the credit union as their front entrance is going to be in the area where we created the parking. And the village thought that some additional to replace those spaces, we could remove the spaces from across the street. Um, and that is how we arrived at the relocation of removing the parking spaces. And at this time, we have, we're short one spot for the other. And, uh, right, we're waiting. But, um, the town's engineer said we could remove a couple handicap spots. So if they have any indication of where we would remove those, I'm happy to do it. There's a letter saying we have, um,
Yeah, we just received that this afternoon. It's in your packet. There's a printed copy of the letter.
We could make up the space by removing ADA spaces. That's what this, the letter says from the village engineer, so.
Um, okay. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't reviewed this letter yet.
When did we get that, Mike?
It came this, late this afternoon. It's in your, I printed a copy to put in your back there. It's, it's right after the letters of support.
Yeah.
He doesn't really say, he, he says he thinks that there are enough spaces. And only if we, we think we need more, that we would remove any.
So can I just go back with my understanding of the history where we've had a very extensive discussions over the last year. And there were a lot of discussions about the number of parking and the removal of the green space in front of what is now going to be the credit union. And the establishment of, in exchange for the requirements of removing the green space that you had, that we had lots of discussion about. The site plan that was approved replaced some green space in the parking lot across the street. And as part of the site plan, extinguished those and created and established green space. And so my understanding, based on our last discussion, was that to add this at twelve hundred square feet, you would be one parking lot space shy based on the code. And that if you went down to a thousand square feet, there would be no parking issue. But because the site plan was approved with that as green space, again, they're not parking spaces. It's green space, which was a negotiated compromise for the taking of the green space in front of it. I just, that was my understanding of how we got here because it sounded like people had a little bit different
Well,
understanding.
I think we should, if we want to go down that path, we could go to the next meeting, but we were, I talked about land banking. The whole of that, we're only talking about
Are you gonna say that, 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 that we've reached land banking and we are all wrong about what we?
No, that was my understanding. Put that aside. We only need one parking space. Talking about one parking space.
Understand, but I think it's important for us all to be on the same page with, with the position of the board. And then we can move forward with what might be a really good decision on our part. That those spots were never land banked and you came in the last meeting, the first thing you shared in the last meeting about your project was that it's a mess is, is the thing you said, we can check the minutes on that to park. And yeah, you said parking is a mess, isn't it? So when you're a member of a planning board and the first thing the applicant tells you is that parking is a mess in your property, the first thing we're gonna do is say, hmm, we better take a closer look at this because the applicant's telling us that parking is a mess at his property.
But we corrected that through each other.
I, I'm, I'm continuing to speak. So that's the first thing. I just want to make it clear that I, that I am just thoughtfully reviewing this application. This is my, our responsibility, or at least mine, because it was brought to us with, with, with the first comment being about what a mess this property is in terms of parking. Firstly. Secondly, then, you, you casually raised the idea that means you're understanding that those spots across the street were land banked and those are not land banked. Land banking is a very particular designation that we established in a resolution that we agree upon as a planning board and that the applicant is very well aware of the condition and even the conditions to unbank that land. So that was never a consideration of this board and it certainly wasn't a part of the, the resolution for the private. That's it. And the reason that happened is exactly the reason why that, that Nikki just explained. And so it's really important that we're all clear about that. We, and now, and now, as, as I see it, we have an opportunity to consider, which we have the discretion to do, whether it is prudent to approve a, a, an opportunity to expand the application that you have. We, we, we've never made this consideration based on that it was a yoga studio owned by a particular practitioner that we all might respect and has community members around the, around the town that might like to attend their program. That's never been the consideration. That the consideration was only that you want to expand twelve hundred square feet. There's a shortage of parking. Those spots are not land banked. You told us parking is a mess on the property. So we're here to make sure that we make a good decision about how to move this forward. And, and I appreciate all the comments from the public here in the public hearing, but they all seem to be skewed toward one, a very positive thing, which is the advocacy for a community member who wants to build a hot yoga studio in, in town, rebuild in town. But they also seem to be, uh, potentially led to, to some conclusions about the way this, the, the status of the application that I think we're just wanting to make sure are, are clear in terms of the facts. Or I at least want to make sure they're clear in terms of that.
I, I actually would like to know the fact.
So, thank you. Um, that sentence.
So I, more to say than um, more to say than we can afford.
I think that was a very good summary. I think the board is all in agreement with, with everything you said. Um, I guess at this time, I, I just want to hear from the applicant very clearly. You know, if we are not considering removing the green space from the parking lot across the street, which do you prefer? Do you prefer to reduce the size of the studio that you're proposing? Or do you prefer for us to look at, you know, ways that we can improve this with less parking than the, than the code requires?
Yeah. Well, I think there also might be, one is, I understand I'm new to this coming in. You guys haven't seen me yet on this application. I'm sensing some hostility on the side of this board and maybe some misunderstanding. So what I would say is I think there's more than just the two options you had said. If you look at the Colliers memo, it really says if you take all the uses together and you look at their peak times. But we also have to remember, this is a gym that the village has determined is accessory to, uh, excuse me, the yoga studio is accessory to the gym. Therefore arguably, I think the if you're attending the gym, you're probably going to be at the yoga studio vice versa. So you're gonna have some crossover parking right there. Um, additionally, there's different peak times. Um, I do understand there's conflicting sometimes of the day, sometimes of the week. Parking is not a problem sometimes of the day, sometimes of the weekends, we have to tow people. So there's a little bit of mixed messaging there.
Can, I just, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I just wanted to clarify what I, but I think, I think we're all saying the same thing.
I really do too, yeah.
What, what, what I believe the chairman was referring to is that the two options the board discussed is if the studio were a little smaller, you wouldn't even need the space. That didn't seem like it was of interest. The other option is what the code provides, which is that the board could consider reducing the parking requirement by one if we're shown that there is overlap of the times, which is what our engineer is saying. So I, I don't really think there's
Okay, I was getting a little confused then. But what I would also say is there does seem to be, this is a busy area. I don't think anyone's gonna deny that. And I do think generally to attract businesses in the downtown, the village does need parking. I know we're all trying to move away from parking. But parking is a necessary evil in this world. What I would say is Collier suggests maybe maneuvering some ADA handicap spaces around. Let's do a look back period. So the, you have the ability under your code to reduce the parking requirements by one space based on the multiple uses in here. Let's see what happens after a year of operation. And then we come back and say, you know what? It's a problem. We need to move some of the ADA spaces. That's not the, the applicant doesn't want to remove ADA spaces right now. Uh, or maybe, and I'm not saying this tonight, but maybe we have to reexamine what's going on here. And so I think sometimes this look back period is helpful for a lot of different reasons. One is, yes, your consulting traffic engineer, parking engineer, whatever you want to call it, says he's satisfied with the number of parking spaces here. Let's see how it practically lays out for a year. Document what's going on and then reevaluate if ADA spaces have to be moved. Or we have to take a look at some sort of rearrangement on this lot across the street.
So I might
Sure.
verify the ADA spaces are included in the total count.
Yeah.
The, the engineer, this was his first review for us.
Yeah.
He may think they're counted separately.
Yeah, they're not.
They are included in the total counts.
Oh, I, I took it as
Yeah. So if you reduce an ADA space, then you're, then you're reducing the space.
Well, what I, what I thought it adds is you have six ADA spaces, but there might not be utilizing those six ADA spaces at all times. So if you make one of the ADA spaces a regular parking spot, um, it's then more open to more of the population.
Yes.
So that's, that's your question, um, about what
So as to, as to your question, um, about what alternatives? I personally, uh, would be much more comfortable with, uh, one less parking space than I would with any, any consideration of removing the green space. That green space is very important and I thought that one of the most predominant comments from the people around were that, well, hey, we're going to yoga, we can walk, we can walk an extra block, we can encourage people to walk. People don't have to park, especially if they're going to a gym, right next to the gym. And I think the green space is very important since you remove that green space, which was really I, I thought a shame. I, I voted against it and so did Rich. You know, we, we, you, you've got that one. You've got to remove the green space next to you. And as far as the one beho- beyond that, the, um, the one that's, uh, east of that, that big asphalt part, I think that should be returned to a green space as well. So I wouldn't even, you know, and so does the county. That's something the county planning, uh, board, they showed us a map where they, so I'm not gonna get too far off track, but that's my answer is like, yeah, let's, let's park it. One less space.
Okay. Uh, so I think we're on the same page here. If you would like, we can add a special condition saying that we will monitor this and assess that we need to move the ADA or remove some ADA spaces in the future, what, six months, a year in the future?
Uh, we were talking, but I think probably a year because six months doesn't get us out of the cold season yet. I know the village's busy season is summer, fall, spring.
But can I add to that? Look, I mean, I went to Rockyoga. I would like this. I'm not disputing this. I want everybody to be clear on that. But if we talk about a year from now, parking, you get, and that we have to make a decision, that means you're deciding in next November, right? I wasn't even aware that you were open, um. The last time you were here, you were not open. But next November, which means that if there is a decision that needs to be made about parking, it's not being solved for another six months after that, because the asphalt plants are gonna be shut down, engineering's happening and everything. So six months.
ADA.
Just repainting.
Yeah.
Just repainting, okay.
Can I make the suggestion? You do it six months from the certificate of occupancy, because there may be a period before they open yet. Just the approval here, they still have to go in the building department. There were still questions in, within the building department about access and construction downstairs. This is not something that is likely that it's gonna open next week. So it maybe suggests six months from the certificate of occupancy, which could take a week or could take two or three months to get. I, I'm not guessing, but I'm just saying that will give you a little more.
But, but that wouldn't go through the whole calendar year. That wouldn't go through the summer months.
Well, the asphalt, the quarries don't shut down until the end of November, middle of December. And I mean, we're not talking about caving eighty-seven, we're talking about potentially four parking spaces, six parking spaces.
But can we just be clear? I don't think the board is talking about removing that green space.
No, not on.
That's not on the table.
Not on.
No, understand it's not on the table tonight.
No, no, it's not on the table ever. Like what, what was discussed the last time was that that the board could decide whether or not to approve the yoga studio depending on whether there's enough parking space.
Yeah.
That's what was discussed.
Yeah.
Exactly, I asked.
Sure.
So one question I have is, um, I've noticed that the work across the street hasn't been done, but the, but the building's occupied currently. Mike, can you tell us the status of the building? The anticipation of completing the first approved site plan?
Well, that's something John would have to answer. It was, the, the gym was given a temporary certificate of occupancy, knowing that there's a lot of pieces to this project. There's the red, it won't be given the final until the, the residential part is done, uh, till everything, the, the credit union, residential and the gym. So it was given the temporary as part of the condition of the final across the street has to be completed.
Does the temporary CFO have any conditions on completion of all the things that are?
Yes, it does. And it has to meet the, the signed cycle.
So is there a timeline for the final?
Um, well, it, it, the, the building permit is good for one year. Anybody can request an extension of the building permit, but it will not be granted a temp, a full CFO in perpetuity until the temporary does not have a timeline on it. It's essentially the, the building permit itself is good for one year and can be extended.
Thank you. And I'm asking because I'd like to encourage the applicant, please consider pacing the beautification of the property across the street at the same pace you paced the work that's been done to enable occupancy in your property. Um, and, and maybe even sharing a timeline of your intention to, to complete the beautification across the street.
So across the street, the first four spaces, copper grass, and that was removed and grass is planted there. The second two spaces that are in the middle, um, have a total of eighteen shrubs. I don't know exactly what they are, but they were not planted because of the season now. We just got too late to the season. So I owe for the site plan, these eighteen shrubs that need to be added and I'll add them in the spring.
So you'll complete the landscaping work when the, when the season allows, get across the street. Um, okay.
And all the trees that were on the site plan are?
They're there.
The trees are, are done.
I planted them in the spring to get them, you know, hired a guy, watered them all summer long and then, uh, the the tree, the arboret- arbiter for the vil- village, the guy that, um, uh, Blight, I brought, um, his name, anyway, he maintained them. So he was trimming them and feeding them and.
And then I have another question, please. Based on the intended use of the basement space, is there any alteration to the site plan that's required in terms of HVAC or other, um, other other heating or ventilation requirements that might impact the exterior of the site plan?
No, these are all, all units beyond the roof like all the other areas.
So are there additional units being added to the roof?
There's actually two, two units up there, not even used right now.
I'm asking, are there, is there anything different than the site plan currently, uh, allows that is going to be needed in order for this additional use?
Well, the answer is if. The, the existing unit that's up there is eight tons. It may be too much for the gym, so I might have to add a smaller unit. So maybe five thousand, that's a small space downstairs, so I may only put a little five ton unit on the roof. So is
may only have, what I'm asking, I'm looking at you, Mike, is does that require an alteration of the existing site?
And so that's up to the code enforcement officer. He's allowed to make minor adjustments to a site plan based on things, you know, like that.
Cause what I'm just at, making sure is that there's nothing else required to begin to occupy the space that isn't in the current site plan. So that we would have proven occupancy of the space in this new use without, and there's other things you might do to the building to make that possible. From I'm asking as directly as I can.
Yeah.
Is there anything else you're going to need to do that we need to ask you to add to the site plan before consideration of this improvement?
Well.
Ventilation?
Show it on the roof?
No, I mean, the basement there, they're putting this in the basement.
Yeah, but these are all, um, building code questions.
Right.
And so
I asked specifically about a site.
No, I know, and I'm gonna get there. And so by adding a new unit on the roof, you're not increasing building height, which is if we were increasing building height, that's something that would require a site plan amendment. Um, if you go ahead and approve this change of use, you then have to pull a building permit, an electrical permit, all that fun stuff. And then your code enforcement officer, your building inspector could say, well, wait a second, you're proposing this, you gotta go have an amended site plan. And then here we are again, yes. But I don't think so, based on from what I've heard of the project and there's no increase to the height of the building, um, or the addition of parking spaces.
The only question that has been different from this, we, Alex and I went with the site plan and verified. The only change from the approved site plan to what's there now is the sign was approved as a mining mix sign. And he has, Mr. Joseph has put a, a pole sign in. So at some point Alex will, before he gives a final CFO, will have to determine if that needs to come back to this board.
There was, there was a pole sign there, but it's pretty crowded, so I just replaced it was there. But it's approved differently, so it's just what my.
That's the only.
Okay, great. Um. So just in conclusion, uh, the, the board agrees that there is adequate parking in this site plan, uh, given the differences of uses uh, for this proposed accessory, accessory use.
And I think what we've done, and this can be included in the resolution, this and a lot of other applicants, we take into consideration the fact that there are street parking within a thousand feet of the lot. That's a part of code too. That says that there's a thousand feet, uh, of, there's within a thousand feet of the property and it's in use that there is street parking that could also be considered in the, um, in any overflow or additional requirement.
Yeah.
It wasn't mentioned, wasn't asked of us by the applicant, but I'm offering that as a suggestion as to how you resolve things like this in the locations.
I would also include in that resolution that there is off-street public parking available in that small area.
Um, and also included in the resolution will be a condition that we, uh, monitor if, you know, ADA spaces are needed to, uh, be removed or relocated. Then, you know.
How do you look? Like, I guess the question is how, when we're coming back and revisiting it in a year, what are we looking at? Like, count studies, like use?
I don't think it would come back to us. That would just be the applicant telling the building department that they wanna repaint one or two of those spaces. This is how I would imagine.
I'm advocating for the look back because I think it's kind of a false. I don't think, I don't think we're gonna, I don't think it has any brilliance, if you will. I'm, it's my perspective that uh, what we're doing is saying that approving this project with one less spot according to code is a reasonable decision. And I don't, I don't see a, I don't see a monitoring plan that's gonna tell, come back and tell us with some accuracy when those ADA spots were and weren't used and whether one should be painted over. I just, I think that, um, I, that's not what I'm advocating for us to add.
I think, I mean, the applicant would always have the option to come back and ask for a change to the site plan.
Yeah, it's gonna affect their business if they can't find, if people can't find.
Right. But if they feel that they, that there's too many ADA spaces and it'd be better to switch one of them to non-ABA, the board could consider that at that time.
But I guess that's my question. Does that have to, does the change in the number of ADA spaces, is that a code thing that has to come or a site plan thing that has to come back to us? Or can it just go to the building department?
No, but it would, well, if it's a change to the site plan, it would come back to us, but the building department wouldn't have to evaluate whether the proposed change complies with the code.
There definitely are in excess. There's, there's five spaces that I counted.
I think there's Collier's and there's six.
Okay, maybe I missed one. There's five more seats for, uh.
I'm just trying to figure out how, how you operationalize this and if we're, if we're making it a, some condition or we're not making it a condition.
We don't need to make. And there's very few things that can be developed from the Village of New Poles without coming to this board, including painting parking lines.
Changing a space, removing an ADA space from an approved site plan absolutely would come after this board.
Okay.
For an amendment.
Sure. Well, uh, in that case of where board is in, uh, agreement, I think we are ready to um, authorize the preparation of a resolution approval. Um, so can I get a motion authorizing, uh, that preparation of that resolution.
So.
And specifically, I think what we wanna make sure that we're clear in saying we're, uh, authorizing a resolution that cites that the board agree, the board determined that approving the project with one less space than code requires is a reasonable decision on, uh, because of the conditions of the balance of the party.
Agreed.
Yeah, you'll make that decision in the resolution. Yep, yep.
So yes, second, great, on favor.
I have one question, so it's for twelve hundred square feet, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we will see you next time.
Good, thanks.
Next, can we have PB twenty-five, twenty-two?
What do you want with the next thing? Can I ask you a question? There are six handicap spots for any.
Well, we're not in that poll of comments section anymore, but that was part of the site plan that we were just reviewing, six ADA spots.
Yeah, I use it.
Great. See you at the gym.
Yeah, my gym's got one spot.
Okay, um, so looking at, uh, forty-two new government boys and forty-four, uh, both sort of at the same stage. I mean, closed public hearing, last meeting, um, we now have a resolution of approval that was prepared. Um, are there any updates to this? The board, uh, have any information, like if we, we, did you manage to walk?
Yeah, I can just share that I did walk through the property. Um, I saw all the boundaries, um, we looked, um, really specifically about the, at the, um, west edge of the property and the areas where there have been flooding historically. Um, it's pretty clear that a good degree of that flooding, or maybe even all of it, is because the grates, um, that, uh, uh, they get clogged with, you know, debris and, and leaves and, and that creates all kinds of pooling. So the village has a big responsibility to monitor that. When it's stormy, it should be, you know, attended to. And some of them are even really narrow grades versus others that are, uh, have wider openings. And so, you know, the narrow ones seem to be in the location where they catch the worst flooding because they just clung, you know, and so that's a big responsibility the village has to take on that would improve that neighborhood. Um, that has nothing to do with the applicant's project. Um, we also talked about, uh, removal of trees. Um, I saw the exact line, um, along which the trees will be removed for the, the rear yard. The rear yard is really small. It's, it's what I would consider, if I were buying a home, it's a pretty minimal strip that is just allowing that to exist. So I don't think there's tree cutting that's really in excess of what's pretty reasonable to just create a little mini backyard. And there aren't a lot of big old healthy trees behind, in, in that area. They're trees, which I, I agree create some buffer between the prop, new development, the new applicant, since new applicant's property and the existing homes. But, um, but I think they're, they're looking to remove the minimum. And then, um, we did talk about grading and, and what it takes to break away this, the, the, the ground that is there in order to create the, the grade and to put the house on that, um, on that rock. And, uh, there's no blasting being done. That's gonna be done with, uh, it's gonna be jackhammered, um, which is a more manual way of doing it, but it's probably less disruptive to the community and to other homes and foundations and things. And then, um, we looked at where the driveway's coming in and then necessity to remove some trees there. And we looked at some dead dangerous trees that are there that, that makes sense to remove. I'm not professional, but I could see that justification. So I think, you know, I think the, the, the applicant has proposed what's appropriate for the lot and um, the tree removal is, is within reason. And the, um, the, the, the improvements in the drainage, which I now understand better than I did, um, in terms of the direction of where the water will flow, that will caught in the rain gardens and and, and directed away from the other property is significant to read the SWIP and you stand there. You really do see that it's intended to make a big difference for the neighboring properties. So all those things were things that I understand better, um, from visiting property and looking at the plans more carefully.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. Yeah, that's very helpful. Um. Okay, word. And did you get a chance to review these resolutions and specific conditions?
Yeah, already, yes.
Um.
I know that we owe you a sample easement.
Yeah.
The green garden, yes.
Okay, um.
These are the last two properties. In the, of the four.
He's in first.
He's the first though.
Yeah.
Just putting four, the men's two are up at the next meeting.
Um, there's only one, one other.
Right.
Potential purchaser wants to hold on to the fourth.
Right, keeping track of those.
These are lots one and two, and lot four was what we held the public hearing at tonight. And it's actually the next item on the agenda for you guys to discuss it.
Um.
I was confused as forty prospect. I thought that meant they were on.
Yeah.
That they were on prospect, not Henry Delta.
That's the corner lot, so it's basic prospect.
Um, so, and board have any questions about the specific conditions? They're just still on maintenance bicycle path and. Uh, easement for the shared driveway. Um, I think pretty straightforward.
Emily, I had one question. If you were to bond, it'd be a bond or letter or credit or?
That's why it says or other security.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever you guys determine.
That's, that's a typical process through the DPW.
Yeah.
They do a bond.
Okay. Want to be sure we're all on the same page.
Great.
Well, I haven't, I haven't changed my mind since the beginning. And I know that I was outvoted then and I'm gonna be outvoted now. Um, but I really don't believe that it was absolutely necessary to put yet another driveway into the bike path that we just built. And nothing that has been said has changed my mind on that. So I will be your lone vote no, because I just think that a bike path is important. Yes, there are other driveways into it. That's why you don't need another one. Not why you should have another one. And I just, it's not there now. It shouldn't be there and sorry, but.
Just, I just like, uh, at the last meeting, there was discussion about signage or markings and I did say I'd be all for. Trying out something there on that driveway to at least maybe mark with two white lines just as a visual, just. There's already enough signs on the road, but, but maybe white lines could be something that. If it works for this one, maybe others can be added, you know, by the pound, but, you know, I'd be open to that.
You mean a white line where?
Um, indicating where the driveway goes out from, you know, from the property out to the road. Cause right now it's, it would just be a driveway and the really only break you would see is in the grass, uh, strip.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, cause there's no guardrail or anything else. And I thought. Um, kinda like how you have a white line on the shoulders of a road, you would just have the two white lines there. It'd kind of be a visual for anyone walking or running a bike, seeing white lines.
Really fast downhill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think some, some kind of visual would be good.
The thing about that is that if it's not marking every driveway, it's probably less safe if it marks one. Because then there's that false assumption that there's no line, I can speed through there.
Yeah.
I think that, that, I think generally, you know, there, there. Cyclists and pedestrians have to be aware of crossing traffic and crossing traffic has to be aware of cyclists, cyclists and pedestrians. And this is one more example where that conflict exists. And, um, and, you know, as it exists in several other areas. I, um, I appreciate what you're sharing, Floyd, but I think that would happen to be a decision done by the, by the Empire State McRae. Um, you know, I think it's a good, it's something to explore.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we're just having a sign on the inside of the trail. Right on, on the roadside, just saying driveway, um. So that way it doesn't look like there's a. Line telling people to stop or something, yeah.
And, and we can put some, you know, informal ways of making sure people know streets have been taking some ownership of that these days, you know, the. Ryan Cronin expect the bike signs and see Plains Road is done like, please be safe here, you know? We can all take that responsibility as homeowners too, and so you can encourage the purchasers of your homes to. Be aware that they're, they're on a, they're on a public way, you know, they're on a public recreation way. I realize what you're saying, Rachel, but I also agree that it could happen.
Okay, I think we're all, it's, it's all good.
Correct, um, in that case, like to get, uh. Um. Motion approving the, uh, resolution for. For, uh, site plan for forty-four Henry W boys. Um.
Was it a roll call?
Uh, yes, first, first we need someone to make the motion and.
So for PB twenty-five, twenty-two.
Okay, yes, twenty-five, twenty-two, forty-two Henry W boys.
Okay.
Um, forty-four.
No, twenty-two makes forty-two.
I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah, it's, it's my fault. A lot of one and twos are backwards from the street addresses and so, yeah.
Okay, and so could we have a roll call?
Did I have a second? Rachel?
May.
Ricky?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Zach?
Hi.
And, uh, then could I have a motion to, uh, approve the site plan for. Forty-four Henry W boys, PB twenty-five, twenty-three.
So.
Second.
And this is the same prop, the, the share in the driveway?
Yes.
Into the rail trail, no.
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Hi.
So, so for forty prospect.
Yes, so now, uh, we will move on to forty prospect.
Sorry, the, that was the.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I totally get it.
Thanks.
Um.
Um, I just, can I say something? I think the numbers are backwards on these resolutions. I think forty-four is twenty-five, twenty-two, cause that's how I have it on the.
Uh.
Cause, yeah, sorry. I know the street numbers are different from the lot, like. From the lot number, but I think lot one was twenty-five, twenty-two. Or, or, you know, it's tough because the public hearing was a combined public hearing, so not, so much of that.
Well, you collapsed the start of the street again, so.
Yeah, well, all I would have, the easy way to fix it is I would just have to change the resul, the application number.
Exactly, cause I think that Lori got the, the, uh, SBL numbers and everything.
The board will allow me the ability to just correct it if needed. Yeah, and we'll correct it, so.
Sure.
I'll double check. I, I wanna be, I wanna go back and look at the actual file.
Hmm. Um, okay, do, do we need a motion for anything there?
I don't, I don't think so.
I think it's, I can find, um.
It's an administrator.
Let's, looking at, uh, PB twenty-five, twenty-four, forty Prospect Street, um. Was there some? Letter from the engineer or anything? Didn't see.
Um. Thought we had that last, we had that last meeting. The, the only thing that came in new was Lloyd submitted a new revised site plan on eleven thirteen. Which, uh, addressed the comments from the engineer from Dinosaurios. So I don't know, and that didn't mean the collapse.
Did the, uh, comments were essentially the same except for two additional, uh, a detail of a swell which was added to the drawing. Um, and, uh, the language on the drawing about, um. Work for lot three going through lot four to get to the, uh. Storm sewer catch basin. Right, and that was added as a note as well, uh, with number six.
I've been really, um, eager and curious to have some follow-up on a lot of these things, like. The rain gardens are supposed to be inspected twice a year. I'd just kinda like to hear back. From our inspector or whatever saying, hey, these rain gardens look good or hey, they didn't look so good. I just.
Is there an arbor? Someone mentioned, uh, was it the last applicant mentioned arbers? Is there a village arbers? Is that like someone from the shade tree commission?
Oh.
Who was he referring?
I don't know who.
Sounds like somebody maybe who works for DBW, but he was firing on his side.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I, I fall all for that, Rachel. I just would. Wonder what the most. Uh, like efficient way of doing that, like, I don't know that, again, just like the last one, like, I don't see like. Having a report to the planning board as being, you know, like, maybe, maybe a written thing to. Building department or something who's overseeing it that we could access, but I. I guess the, the part that I don't wanna get involved in is like enforcement or having like.
Right.
Ongoing oversight since that's the, the, you know, Mike and Alex anyway.
Yeah, I mean jurisdictionally, it's not, once the planning board is approved it and it's all, you know, we don't really have jurisdiction anymore at this board to.
But, but there is something new now.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but there is something new that I haven't had to do is that you're requiring easement. For maintenance or for reading, so that has been added now.
Okay.
That there is, uh, uh, easement for access to the, to the. For the, by the village.
Okay.
That was never required before.
I mean, I understand we're not in the business of enforcement, but I'd still like to know. I mean, we spend all this time making these plans and saying, oh, well, this isn't. You know, this is an environmental protection that we're in favor of, of installing and I just wanna know how, how they do it, you know? I can just.
Yeah, yeah, well, reach out to Alex.
Alex.
I would be the wrong person, cause I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's.
It's like, not me.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you ask me, I would have to ask Alex, so you're better off just reaching.
Yeah, I'm not opposed. I just don't like, I just don't like that. No, I hear you.
Um. All right, uh, well, were there any questions from the board about the revised site plan or any of the other details? On this?
That, um. There was a question around lot coverage there, but it's, it's basically a hundred percent of allowable. Yeah, thirty percent and, um. The village has, the village has recently, by ten years, lumped a lot more things in what counts as lot coverage. Without actually increasing the lot, allowable lot coverage, so stuff to. Yeah, and, and so just wanna make sure that we're all aware of that and also that, uh. It's not, it can't be required, it doesn't have to be. Required doing different driveway, but that would just be one. Because the location of the driveway in that area that's prone to flooding. You know, there's a real responsibility of the village to make sure that that area doesn't flood by cleaning those grates regularly. But I made the one suggestion, given the maximization of the lot coverage. And particularly troublesome area there, that maybe the driveway could be permeable. That was the last thing that I. And I'm not holding it as a, as a requirement, but I'm just making this suggestion. I know that, you know, that type of material, as Terry has shared with us, is, is an ideal either because it creates its own followers. But it's just one other way that we could really be thoughtful about what we've heard in public hearings. Um, about what happens down there and what might improve it.
My, my one experience with this is unless you actually refine permeable papers. That gravel, once it's compacted, is really not much different.
Yeah, I think that was.
Some, some water will, will soak in over time, you know, if, if, if it ponds and puddles. Eventually it, it will both soak in and evaporate, but. In, in a hard rainstorm, it's gonna run right off. It's not gonna.
Let it go entirely. We, we did reduce the size of the driveway to, so that we weren't over thirty percent, so we have done that. So.
I, I agree with you about the permeable surfaces, that, 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 that should be encouraged. I don't know, we don't have the means to require it right now, but there are various types and. Um. They would, it would be beneficial to.
You, you can require it as far as your side, but you just have that justification for any of your requirements, so.
I'm not suggesting we require it.
Yeah. Uh.
And gravel certainly is better than paper, uh, which is completely gonna run off.
Right, okay, um, well. I don't think that. I'm not, I advocate for any special condition right now. I think the rain garden and other stormwater. Features are enough, um. But, um.
We'll just need the easements that, um, Emily had outside.
Yeah.
Between lot four and lot three, given that they're going to be the same ownership. Well, even if they weren't, they still.
Are you, I don't see the cut and fill map. Um.
What is that?
Are you the cut and fill map? Uh, uh, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, well, that was mostly addressed during the subdivision review when we regraded for the drainage, cause, uh. The concern mostly raised by the neighbors was that the water was flooding on Prospect Street, so we. Took the majority of it and sent it towards Henry Boys to that catch basin. So all the, all the drainage studies and regrading was mainly addressed, uh, during the subdivision part.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So that. Was part of this, uh, in the initial application. Yeah, uh, with the drainage, but it wasn't like the vast majority of it. That was really addressed first.
I'm sure the public hearing, uh, the burn two was all about, when all the neighbors came, it was during the subdivision public hearing.
Right, and I don't, uh, and you're not bringing it outside the bill?
Uh, not for this lot, no.
Okay.
Um, all right, in that case, I'd like to get a motion authorizing the preparation of the resolution approval. Um.
So.
Take it, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so I think that is everything and, um, yeah, you're aware.
I did just double check and I think the resolutions and the application numbers are.
So. Great.
I will clarify it one more time, but I believe they are for that.
Excellent, um. Well, we will see you next time, um, next.
Thank you. Rich, you got a good memory from that meeting?
Hey. Um, and then our final agenda item is the twenty-twenty-five zoning code update.
Like me that's come up there.
Yes, please.
At the other laptop, so I can.
I got one, two, three, schedule A. That was.
Yeah, I don't need to think, I don't think we're gonna get it. I, I assume we're only gonna get.
I only did my homework.
Yeah, yeah.
True, I got a little bit further than that.
Yeah, but, uh.
But I went over.
I'm gonna be speaking with the village board tomorrow about schedule A, so. Best way to do this.
Um.
I'm gonna put it up on the screen here. So. We went through the overview, um, do you wanna start out with you guys asking me questions based on your reviews? Do you want me to sort of go a little more in detail of each section? Wha, what's your preference?
My preference would be, I think Terry shared some comments and, and the comments that we have on specific things.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe to direct conversation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna get too in detail and try to review everything.
Yeah.
Here tonight, but yeah, maybe we can just go through some.
Well, article, let me just sort of give you the, the real quick, article one is primarily. General provisions, there's very little change in the first couple sections of article one. Where there are big changes is in definitions.
Yeah.
Um. There's the authority, I've just added some boilerplate language that I believe should be in there, um. Otherwise, and then when you get into definitions and word usage. That's where there's significant change, so maybe if we, can we start with questions about article one and kind of work through article by article?
Yeah, yeah, great.
Um, so.
Rich, do you wanna start or?
Yeah, start.
Sure, I have eleven questions.
Okay.
Uh, actually, I can make it ten because I think one of them resolved itself. There was this. Actually, I can make it ten because I think one of them resolved itself. There was this elimination of club. Um, but then there's another thing called nonprofit clubs. The reason clubs were eliminated because there's already clubs.
Yeah, the the. I I basically thought most clubs are nonprofit clubs and thought that the two were redundant.
Right.
And I made the choice to go with nonprofit. If you think I should go the other direction and make the club the generic definition, I'm happy to do that.
I happen to know an example that I grew up in, which was a club that was not a nonprofit club, and I was like, oh, that would not be accounted for in this code.
Okay.
The Spanish American Social Club, Flatkill, was a club, but it wasn't a nonprofit membership organization. So just asking that, one another one. There is this definition of completed application, and I and I think this is more of like a point to raise where maybe Emily over time continues to give us advice. We had that question that became, you know, a pseudo legal question. That was about whether we're reviewing applications that aren't complete at our board. And whether reviewing something that's not a complete application makes our review in some way less valid. And I just wanted to, we defined what a completed application is, and I just wanted to encourage as we move forward. To potentially only enable the planning board. To see a complete application if in fact the code tells us that we should only be reviewing complete applications. I've heard you also advise that we can review something that's incomplete. And have it be more of an iterative process. But I've also um had experiences where that iterative process becomes a little muddy. Where like the applicant's asking us what to do. Even as in the example of the applicant that was here before us earlier. So just we've defined completed application. I guess I'm asking like, what's that gonna look like in practice?
So. Part of the reason I put this definition in here is because. In the secret process and in some reviews. For things like that we have not had previously, but things like telecommunications towers. The the federal statute. There's a thing called the shot clock. And it commences upon this board determining they have a complete application. It's really important in telecommunications towers because you have sixty days from the time it's complete to be done. Uh, unless the applicant allows you to go further. Um, where it's really important is to say that this board says, okay, we have all the information we need. Is because applicants will come in and present your and say, okay, now the shot clock starts right now. And I. Experienced this in Rochester twice where I had to tell the attorneys, no, you do not have a completed application. You haven't answered X, Y, and Z. And so that's partially why it's in here. You maybe have taken it another step further that I didn't really think about. And I think it's a good question to ponder. How how this?
Um, I mean, personally, I don't think that we should review incomplete applications. I think that the um. The building inspector, when they review the application that comes in, should make sure it's complete before it comes to this board and. You you know, you and Alex and um. But that's not to say that we have everything we're we're gonna need, right? Like, so we should have everything that the code requires. But you may still ask for for more things, you know, once you're reviewing.
Okay.
Yeah.
It says that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So complete for the purpose of commencing review of the application, which but it doesn't say. And the reason we, this is a copy from what we did in Rochester, which we, the supplemental, and that would be like. You may ask for more detail of something that it meets the letter of the code, but you want more detail. You know, like you want better elevations.
Yeah, great. So it's both what we review should be complete, and we will continue to ask for things that make it approvable by us.
Exactly.
I mean, we tried not to bring it to you guys until we feel that the zoning code has been met.
Yeah.
Um, but also understanding that. There are some situations within the code where an applicant can ask for waivers. We as a building department can't say yes or no to that. Only this board can.
And I think most of what we've seen has been by sloppy architects, sloppy engineering, you know, where the tables are missing or there's not clarity about things on on plan. So that's most of what I think made something incomplete in the past, and so just wanting to ask that the code review, which is better than it's ever been. In my time on the board, it's, you know, just continues to be as complete as possible before we see things.
We don't always look at, I will say, that level of detail of the format of of templates.
Yeah.
And that actually is something. I went back and I looked at the site plan requirements, and I'm actually kind of happy that they're a little bit looser. Because things, for example, like that driveway widening, you know, did we really need her to meet the letter of the law every item? When it was simply for a widening of a driveway from eighteen or whatever it was, twelve to eighteen feet. So.
I'll try to move on the rest of these more.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, but no, these are good conversations.
Saying, what is a uh in in the definition of dwelling unit? What is a transient lodging structure? Sound like a yurt?
We spent like an hour on this. So what we were trying to do was to just make the distinction. Whether whether something is for transient use, meaning less than thirty days or for longer term use.
Um.
And so if it's if it's, you know, so that we're not asking how the people relate to each other. We're asking if they're staying there.
What would be an example?
So what about like if somebody parked an RV in their yard?
Well, that's not legal because you can't live in an RV.
Would be an Airbnb, basically. I mean, a hotel, uh, you know, the lodging uses would be transient. And then dwelling units are not transient.
Uh, Emily and I sort of came up, the definition of family. The one family, two family. Given that, you know, when they were first done, were more about. Blood family, and then there was the equivalent family. We wanted to get away from all that.
Yeah.
So the way we're decide, we've sort of decided to present, and we haven't presented this to the village board yet, is. Duration. So if you're staying less than thirty days. It it can't be a single family or two family dwelling, but if you're staying more than thirty days.
So a transient lodging structure in a dwelling unit, let's say, for example, someone wants to have. A bed and breakfast and they live in their home, but they wanna let people live, they wanna let people stay there for days at a time. Is that a transient lodging structure in a dwelling unit?
No, because a bed and breakfast requires owner occupancy. Under state code. So by owner occupancy, they are, they're running a bed and breakfast, which is. Somewhat of an accessory use. They are still living there. It's still a single family home.
So why don't we call it instead of like the convoluted transit? Why why is it not a short? A short term?
Because transients don't have to be short term rentals. Transients can also be. Thing.
Informal.
Wha- what we have done in in doing this, we've removed the definition of roomy house. We've removed the definition of uh. Uh fraternity and sorority. Uh, we've return, removed the definition of congregate dwelling. Now, if it's like a group home by state law, that's a single family house. So we're trying to set.
Same, something this dwelling unit. It it's it's intended to be occupied by a family which is otherwise defined, and it's not intended to be occupied.
Right.
By. Someone who's train, by transient uh residents of any sort. It's just that idea of transient lodging structure makes it seem like something very different. Like I thought of that as like.
That's a good comment.
You put a tent, you put a tent in your yard and have people living there or something like that.
Well, you can't do that.
You can't have a transient.
Yeah, I don't.
Transient occupancy in a dwelling. Um, so the next thing was this definition of family, which I really love the definition of family. And it's um, it's new direction. And I think it just made. Hundred houses in the village. Legal that were illegal, quite frankly, and and because. This is what is being living, this is what is occupying these rental homes. And we denied that definition for so long that folks have something to point to, to try to um. You know, selectively prevent these resi- these 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 rental houses. And I think we've made it more clear. I personally think we've made it more clear by establishing this.
So. So the red was what I added in an Emily, and I tweaked it to the. The purple is the tweaks that we took out from what I.
So we, this is a really important idea.
I think this is one that I'll probably flag.
I've thought about this a lot.
Okay.
And I've come to a different conclusion. Um, if you wanna hear it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so in my opinion, it's not about family at all. It's about money. People rent rooms because they are poor and they can't afford their own apartment, let alone a home, not because they are somehow a family or not. The group is in the house because of their common financial situation and not because they're related to each other or necessarily even like each other. The reason landlords rented them is not because they're trying to bring down the neighborhood. It's because they make more money renting by the room than they do by the apartment or house. And also because there are more and more people who can't afford more than a room in a house. So the entire situation appears to me to be more of an economic one than 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 zoning. And in my opinion, the way to fix a situation would be to make it illegal to charge more for rooms in a house than the whole house rents for. And that that way that would solve the problem because if there are more low income people in the neighborhood. That want a place that's less expensive to live, they're actually gonna get that instead of paying more for that square footage just because they're renting a room. And that's just the economic reality. Question is, how do you like, because then they would just say, well, we rent the whole house for the aggregate amount. Or you're saying if the whole house rents for five hundred dollars, you can't rent any room for five hundred dollars? I guess. Because I'm I'm looking at the definition and it kind of, I think the first sentence kind of against what I'm talking about.
The 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 problem is what you're suggesting is about operation.
Mm hmm.
Zoning is land use. Zoning is, is it a one family house or two fam- or isn't it? You, what you're proposing is something that the village board could consider. I I don't know whether they legally can or can't do it. I don't wanna get into that, but it's not a function of the zoning code. It's an operational. And basically, they're setting a cap on. Rentals, you know, this board can't say you can or can't rent by the room. It's an operational thing.
Right, I wasn't saying.
Saying it.
Yeah, no, but it wouldn't be in the zoning code then.
No, it would be somewhere, but I feel like that's the, it's it's about the money.
Right.
You know, they they they're charging more per room and it hurts in both ways. Um, because it it. Encourages more of that, you know, rent by the room thing to happen.
Yeah.
And then it also means it's more expensive for people who are, you know, indigent and need to rent by the.
But we need a definition for family.
In the zone.
The 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 thing is that unless you're gonna not have one family, two family, which is just kind of ubiquitous, you kind of have to deal with the word family. And so what we were doing here was just saying. Any group of people, if they're living together for more than a month at a time, then they're a family.
They're considered to be a family.
Yeah.
And then a single housekeeping unit kind of gets to the economics of it, right?
I mean, I believe that if the village board wanted to, it could say, we don't allow. Rentals by the room. I I I do think that would be, you could call that a different type of use.
But that wouldn't be in the zoning code. That would be in another.
Well, I'm not sure. We could talk about that, but I I don't, I don't think the village board could set um. Rental rates. Very, I mean, I I I think that's.
Well, that's that's. Then now you're getting into the whole thing about rent control, which is not part of zoning. That's. And there's there's lots of arguments going on in Albany about rent control right now.
I hear you. I just feel like, you know. Affordable housing, being able to afford a place. You know, the smaller it is, the more affordable it is. The more people you have. In a unit, the, you know, you're dividing up the cost. That's how people afford, you know, that's that's, I mean. People, I don't think they understand what that's like, you know? I mean, you have a child and all you can afford is one room in a house. You're gonna live in that one room with the child. That's the way, that's the reality.
I think your point's really valid, Rachel. I just think we'd have to. Do more exploring to figure out. A, how to even propose it, and B, where to propose it.
Okay.
Probably would be under the housing section, sure.
Yeah.
But um, yeah, I'm, please don't feel like I'm dismissing what you're saying. It's just, I don't think it fits in zoning.
I've just been thinking about it a lot.
No, it's 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 a very valid point, and we'll, I'll pursue it and see what we can do with it.
So you are not in favor of limiting the size of family as in like, you know, previously we were like, family is. Three people, up to three people. So you think there could be a eight person family?
I grew up in a neighborhood where there were average of eight.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about eight unrelated college students.
Well, I mean, does that come under club at all with the fraternities, or you just eliminated that?
No, I'm not necessarily.
College students that, you know, can't afford to live.
They are really related by virtue of the fact that they share.
They share an economic necessity.
But but now.
And now, or maybe.
I. I'm just a little worried that this is. You know, dramatically increasing. The density in some of these single family houses, like, okay, so now there's no limit. The landlord's just gonna. Chop these buildings up into. You know, eight annual bedrooms.
No, be able to, because then the building permit won't allow that to happen because there's minimum sizes of buildings. They need to have uh two means of access for every build, every bedroom.
So I guess the flip side of that, though, is to the extent of. That there are, you know, I'm the oldest of six children, right? Like, it was a very small house. But like, would you like then say that you can't. Create extra bedrooms so that each kid could have their own bedroom when it's related versus, I mean, I guess the question about this is trying to create. Remove the distinctions from biology and marriage and and legal contracts other than that. So if you're gonna regulate density through this, like you would then be regulating density on biological families or people would adopt it a dozen times.
So so Bill, building code is that self regulator. Building code says a bedroom can be X number of square feet. It has to have a a. A a window or two means of egress because you have to have an alternative. Um. You know, building code has changed considerably over the years, um, so. What may have been allowed twenty, thirty, forty years ago may, you know, and I don't know what's changed or not changed in bedrooms, but but my point is. It's somewhat regulated under building code. Now, we. As building inspector and a building department, we can't go knock on somebody's door and, hey, we want to investigate if you built another bedroom. People do it all the time. I I I hate to say that, but you know, that family room suddenly becomes a bedroom. But i- it's, there's no way to regulate that. Um.
I I mean. There's no rental inspections, like there, I know.
There are rental inspections, but if we know about them.
Okay, well, then I I gotta. Send the building department some emails about, you know, my neighbors or something like, I I know for a fact that, yeah.
Well, and 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 I'll be honest, we need that information because. We are not regularly going out and driving the streets.
They're inspecting when you rent rental homes.
If they're registered, if if they're unregistered and we don't know about them, then there's no way, you know. They're not on our list to inspect. The ones we know about are inspected annuals.
So the the.
But it's the it's the illegal ones.
Home to be a rental home, and then you get inspected, and they have requirements of fire and all that.
Yeah, so I also agree, Rachel, with what you're saying. The reason people rent within a home. Uh, the reason people that might not be, you know, let's call it biological relatives, rent a home together to save costs and. And that's absolutely true, and you could say that makes it, that makes this a positive thing, that. Someone doesn't have to rent an entire house, which they can't afford. Instead, they can go in with others and rent a room within a house that they can afford. Um, so I understand that 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 it's it's driven by financial need. And I also think. That this could be seen as something that's favorable for that that for that need. Which is that you're, you don't have to be related to each other by biology or marriage. To live in a house together and not be questioned as to whether you're allowed to live together.
And 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 there is a little bit of advantage to the rent by the room because. If there's three bedrooms and there's three roommates that are joined together and they're on one lease. Uh, you know, one person's name is ultimately on that lease, and if if they break the lease, then the other people are are out of luck, and so. The. The ones that are truly renting by the room and doing it. Correctly. Have, in that example, would have three different leases. The leases would be for the whole structure plus one one bedroom and. In a way, you're somewhat protecting people more by doing. In a way, you're somewhat protecting people more by doing that, I think.
I suppose, except for quite price gouging.
Well, except for price gouging, correct, yeah.
And it's, it's, it's pretty standard.
I I will tell you, family definition, you can tell, if you Google the court cases about definition of family, you will see for the last fifty years. It's been a ongoing discussion about how to define it.
One thing that this family definition doesn't address is that they're living in this uh, single housekeeping unit under a lease. Um, it just says they can't be transient, which means it has to be for a period of more than twenty nine.
But they don't have to be under a lease, a single family is also of an ownership situation, is still a single family or a joint family. So a lot of definitely at least.
So so this does allow for a landlord to. Initiate five different leases so that five people can live in one dwelling unit as a family.
The way it's written, it does, if that's something that you think the village board should consider, then the, you know, that would be something.
We're not.
Because like some people are gonna rent without a lease.
We're not taking a position.
Or it says for a lease too.
Right.
We're not taking a position on so much on operation. You know, we're not, when you guys approve a single family or two family house. You're not saying you can sell it or rent it, the the owner can do either, if they choose to rent it. Then there's other rules that they have to follow, but.
Um, I'm I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep my questions moving, thank you for letting me go first, I don't wanna be the one to take more of the time.
These are good conversations.
We're all talking about, so the next thing I had was nonconforming lot. I just wanna make sure I understand that if someone applies for a change of use in a not, on a nonconforming lot. It was my understanding that in most cases they're required to make that lot conforming. In that, in that special use request.
So, a nonconforming lot, not a nonconforming structure. A nonconforming lot is a lot that doesn't meet zoning standards.
Hmm.
Which could be setbacks, it could be, it could be a preexisting nonconforming in that the lot was created long before zoning existed. Um. The, the code, the new Paltz code. Had the same problem that I see many codes have and that they didn't differentiate between lots and structures. They're two very different things, a nonconforming structure is different than a nonconforming lot, so. There are provisions within here that like, you can build a single family home on a nonconforming lot. As long as you meet certain criteria.
Right, so the this thing that I'm asking about is applies in both definitions, a nonconforming structure and nonconforming law. And it may just be my misunderstanding, my my past misunderstanding. But it was my understanding that when you apply for a change of use, you come to the planning board for a change of use on a nonconforming structure. You then have to make that structure conforming.
That's not.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
If it's preexisting, not, you know, if it was nonconforming. Because if it predated zoning code or predated changes in the zoning code, say it was conforming when it was built. And then the code changed and made it nonconforming, the way, when you get to the nonconforming section. You can't increase the nonconformingness, but you don't have to make it be conforming.
If you're changing its use.
Yeah, even if you're changing its use, because the structure isn't the use. The uses, you know, it's not the.
I got a little lost in the question.
Something cannot, so something is nonconforming, a building is nonconforming. Uh, I don't know a good example that maybe, maybe it doesn't make a handicap, it doesn't meet a handicap standard or.
Well, that's, that's a little bit different.
Yeah.
That's A D A, cause those are federal regulations.
So I.
So I'm talking more about.
Applications where someone has had a nonconforming structure that we've required them to get to conformity. As a result of them bringing it as an application for a change of use.
It would depend on what is nonconform like that, you know, if it's, if it's setbacks, you're you're not gonna make them chop part of the building off.
Right, and you can't change the size of a lot.
Right, now.
It's one of the suggestions that I made in my comments too, though, that we, it would be nice if this board had clearer um. Guidance as to when a site plan opens up the entire review of the lot versus. We're just changing the use of this one storefront and we're not gonna look at the rest of the lot. And I don't feel like we have a real clear standard.
That's kinda what I'm asking about, I I thought I had a general impression that when something is nonconforming and it comes for a change of use. It has to be brought into conformity, in many cases, we've we've required that.
We have, yeah.
Right, if it depends is the answer.
It depends on what the, what standard is nonconforming. A D A parking spaces is 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 an example, it is, it is achievable.
Yeah.
Whereas a setback, nonconformingness is not achievable, short of.
This definition says it pretty absolutely, in the case, uh, it says nonconforming structure or building, in the case of a change of occupancy or use. Uh, the the error here, typo here, but it says a change of occupancy. Or use of a structure or building which is already nonconforming at the time of a change of use or occupancy, the new use or occupancy may continue. But not expand, it's nonconforming.
I I'm thinking of several projects, including the old Ruby Blueberry and Atavola where we. I feel like this, we wrestled with this problem, yeah.
Uh, uh, I hear your point and I'll make sure to change it, cause what this is intended is, is is zoning standards. Which is setbacks, uh, that, uh, lot coverage, things like that.
You're talking about the difference between a use variance and area variance.
No, we're not there about variances at all, because what we're saying is you don't need to get a variance. I- 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 but y- your point is, your point is valid, Rich, I mean, a nonconforming lot is usually. An undersized lot.
Yeah, but I'm saying building, structure, not lot, cause both definitions are there, both have the same.
I will.
I'm just saying there's.
No, no, your point is.
Qualifiers, because it doesn't seem to be the case that if you have something nonconforming, you can get a change of use. And still have that, leave that nonconforming in place, doesn't seem like that's a universal case.
Right, so we'll have to clarify what what can be made to be brought up conforming and what isn't.
And and also to, I think along the same lines, when do we. When do we require a new site plan for a site that never had a site plan? So if you, if you come in and you have a building that never had a site plan and you just wanna change out the, the store and one. You know, usually we let that go, but if you wanna change the whole use of the lot, we want a new site plan.
Well, my, my feeling is this board always has that ability because you're the ones issuing the site plan approval. If you look at something and you say, hey, this is preexisting, but I want, I want it to be changed to be, you know, to be uh, different. You have that ability.
Okay, well then that should be clear so that we don't get any pushback from applicants, that we don't have, yeah.
They could say, now, this is the code says, my definition codes is I'm allowed to do this and not fix anything.
Right.
Hmm, al- also on the nonconforming lot, it seems like there's also a definition under lot comma, nonconforming.
Uh, okay.
I don't know.
Okay, I'll 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 look at that because some of it was.
I'm gonna skip to my last one, some of the other ones were pretty micro and actually a couple of them had to do with the definition of transient, which I need to read later, so they're fine. My last one's gonna seem a little silly, but it's actually important to me, is uh, there's that whole section about adult entertainment. And in the section about adult entertainment, one of the things it prohibits. Is some, is what's described as male or female impersonators. And that to me would imply that like, uh, a place that has an entertainment program couldn't have a drag show, for example. That might not have nudity, might not have any sexual invitation, but it could be, what a term, which is an old term. Female impersonator, male impersonator, I think that that shouldn't be included in.
Is that in the definitions or in the code itself?
It's in the, it's in that code where we get to adult entertain, where it talks about the prohibition of adult entertainment.
But it's in the section of code, not in the.
Yeah, it's not in the.
Pro- prohibited.
But it's in section.
Yeah, and you know what, that is, I I'll be very honest, I didn't look at any of that because the village board said just carry over what's there, so. Your point is very valid and we'll, we'll take a look at that.
That is valid, the other thing I was thinking when I looked at that was, um, you have in the chart that you have. Like for the, um, for the uh, adult entertainment. It's totally prohibited, so there are X's going all the way across the chart.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like maybe that should go with all the things, it would make it easier to look at the chart. If all the other things that were, you know, would be Xed out, like, it's not allowed in this zone, this zone, this zone, there's an X there instead of a blank space. You're doing it for that, sorry, I'm just saying, look at the chart, I think it would look a lot clearer, cause it'd be, oh, it it, you know what I mean?
Okay.
It's just a little inconsistency, but it's not.
Well, well, see, normally the reason you do it that way is the X means it's prohibited, the blank means it's not prohibited, but it's also not allowed. So there's a difference, it's prohibited by the code, that's why the X is there, um, the reason that.
Silent, it's just not allowed?
Well, well, the reason, well, but the reason it matters is, is the way we, it it used to be in the existing code. If it's not specifically allowed, it's prohibited. One of the big proposals that I've made, which to the town, to the village board, is that if a use is not. Uh, contemplated is what it's called, a use not contemplated, instead of it just saying it's automatically prohibited. It goes to the village board to consider whether that use, they're not reviewing the application, they're reviewing the use. And it's essentially a a request for a change to the code. And they look and say, yes, this use can be allowed in a zoning district with a special use permit. Then it comes to you guys for review on our special use, and the reason that's important is, in the evolving world that we're in today. Uses, if you have to redo your zoning code every time somebody comes up with a new use. Uh, you'll go crazy, so it's, it's set up so the village board can look at it in that moment.
Shouldn't that power be with the Z B A?
It actually, because it's a legislative decision, it should go with to the village board because they're the ones who write the zoning code. So what they're doing, it's not a variance, a variance is it.
So so this application would then have to wait for the village board to amend the zoning code?
No, they wouldn't have to amend it, see, what this does is, it allows them the ability to add that use to the zoning code. It it it, event essentially becomes amended in the future, but they don't have to go through the process to amend it in that moment. So.
So they don't need to do a local law?
Uh. Hmm, my research said no, they can, they can, it it's, the zoning code gives them the authority. To review a, an uncontemplated use and decide if it's allowed in a specific zoning district. Ultimately, the next time they update the code, you know, it becomes precedent, it's always allowed now in that zoning district if another one comes along. But it's like an interim change that's made in the zoning code, they can do a local law at any time they want.
Just feels a little weird.
But it should never go to the zoning board of appeals because it's, it's.
It's almost impossible to get a use.
Yeah, exactly, and that's why it should never go to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
You have to prove that you couldn't do any other allowed use profitably.
The zoning board of appeals, in the way I've set it up, would rule on if you wanted to do a use that was allowed in another district, but not allowed in a certain district.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that echoes as only with appeals, because the village board has already said, we thought about that use. We've considered it, it's allowed in these districts and somebody else comes along and said, I'd really like it in this district.
Okay.
Um, so it's, it, we, we did, we, we've done it twice now in Rochester and it, it's, it's worked both times. Uh, they were uses that nobody ever thought about and somebody came in and said, hey, I'd like to do this.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Um, okay, Nikki, do you have any stuff in the definition section?
So. I felt like there was a lot in the definitions and in some ways, there were like overspecificity like. Ag, ag adjacent terms, farm operations, greenhouse, nursery. But then there were other things that were really broad and we had like retail, you know, so we have recording studios, but we have retail. And so I guess my question is, um. Are we losing something or gaining something if we go deep on certain areas? And more general on others or vice versa, right, like the, it seemed. I I had a hard time following all of the, um, the rationale for the specificity.
So, the ag specificity is because we are now mirroring New York State Ag and Markets Law. Which increasingly has had court decisions giving it more authority and more power. Over locals only, because of, now, we do not have in the village. A huge amount of ag uses, I would be very blunt, we don't have a farm operation that I'm aware of anywhere. Part of the.
What would you?
Do we?
More yellows.
Not sweet.
Oh, is, is Huguenat in the village though?
I'm pretty sure it is, isn't it?
Jewett Farm.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we, we have, yes, the Huguenat, so we have two properties. In the village that are in the New York State Ag District, or the Elster County Ag District Program. Part of the reason, one of the things the board asked, being the village board, asked me to do was. Shake this code so it could be a easier transition when and if. The two communities come together to move the two codes together. So I've included a fair amount of agricultural stuff that probably never will happen to us, but to your point. I felt like the retail was too specific, we had bookstore, we had clothing store, I mean, to me. Unless there's a special concern about a retail use. Like I did make a separate one for furniture and appliance store because big delivery trucks. Large, you know, large containers, uh, it's, they're big items. But do we really care if it's a bookstore or a clothing store, it's, it's the same impacts for the most part. Um, when you get to, um, service industries. I separated out like laundromat and dry cleaner because chemicals with a dry cleaner, laundromat, higher water usage.
Oh, absolutely, those should be separate, but I don't think you included dry cleaning. Like you, you.
I think I did, I think I did include a definition for it.
Yeah, I mean, that's. The question, like, like, why, why, so thank you, that I need to read.
Yeah.
Calibrate.
And some, the agricultural stuff, the state really now trumps local on, they can require that you do a, uh, a. It's not on the bridge site plan, what's the New York was called, yeah.
Shoot.
Uh, simplified site, I mean, that's not the right language, but basically, they can say, there's certain categories of your site plan that.
Abbreviated maybe?
Yeah, abbreviated, I think that is it, anyway, the farm operation is one hundred percent mirroring their definition. And that's also to prevent, you know, the hobby farms, which I don't know that we have any in the village, but. The homeowner that suddenly gets, you know, ten goats and five pigs and, um, it's, it's a hobby, I'm not really running a farm. But then they create problems within the the neighborhoods because they are a farm, so. Um, farm operation is defined as having to be in a state certified agricultural district and so. But that's, maybe not the short answer, but that, that is the answer of why it was.
That was, that was the large part, I need to recalibrate.
Okay.
I don't know that I'll have other stuff, but I wanna look back and.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I mean, I think I, I had some questions about that, uh, like. Limited business retail, poor business retail. So.
So those, we've taken out.
Right, right.
Yeah, and just retail is retail.
But then, so does that mean that some of the previous like highway business retail stuff is now allowed? In any retail location?
No, now they're, now they're more defined, like, the highway business would be like automotive. Uh, sales or things like that, there, there is a new uh, definition for uh. Retail vehicle, yeah, yeah.
Okay, but like.
Yeah, I mean, the, the traditional, we don't really have the locations anymore for the traditional highway business, it was primarily, we're thirty two north. And now that's the N V R, where the village board has signaled a whole change for that area, so. So it didn't make sense to continue this highway business idea, because we don't have a highway business location anymore.
Okay.
That is to me.
That makes sense. And then, I forget, was there was there like definitions of a a fast food restaurant in in the definitions?
Yes.
Um, okay, wasn't wasn't coming up for me.
Um. It's it's under restaurant comma fast food, it's not under fast food restaurant.
Oh, but that's in the main code section, it's not in the article one.
No, it should be, should be in the definitions, restaurant.
So you say it's under restaurant?
It's under restaurant. Because you have different types of restaurants, so rather than having fast food under the F's and, I try to
Sure.
put them all in the same location, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, I see, so you've defined.
And I don't remember if I changed it from what was in there or or.
No, you have, you have fast food separately from restaurant.
Do I?
Still. Yeah.
Restaurant comma fast food.
And then it does use in the.
Yeah, but it's not under fast food, it's restaurant, yeah, yeah.
Yes, absolutely, but you have it di- differently defined.
Yeah, I mean, I I yeah, they they're yeah, that's the former definition was under limited business retail, core business retail, and since we're kind of moving away from those concepts. Um.
Yeah, yeah.
I've just changed it to more definition of what a fast food restaurant really is.
Yep, okay, uh, no, that that makes sense to me now, I didn't see that before. Um, it seemed like there was two definitions of building area, one is area comma building, and one is.
Okay, that's another.
Um.
I will take a look at that and check for the continuity of the two, because
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes what I was doing was working with my template zoning code and trying to insert definitions, and sometimes they were worded differently, and so I tried to get every overlap.
One hour necessary, yep.
Yeah.
And then this amount of work.
It's a lot of work and.
It was about six months, one and all.
Editorial work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of it really, really well done.
No, but these, this is good feedback, because you're looking at it with a fresh set of eyes. And, you know, when you look at it for so long, you gloss over things like that.
Oh, I went over it with the fine tooth, no, I've got like fourteen. People hear them all, but they're very, uh, some of them, it's just just specific wording, uh, which I, it was more.
You can always just email me, it's like.
It was more of an English thing than a.
Yeah, if any of you wanna just email me your list too, that I can sort of take off, because if it's wording, if if it, you know, if if it makes sense, we'll just go ahead and change it.
Okay.
Yeah, I have some smaller things, like, I don't know, about like EV charging.
Okay.
Um.
Now, the the EV charging is because the code is silent on on things like that, and with the county executive having a county policy document uh, about clean energy, you know, I felt like it, we should be, certain applications, we should be mandating them, and we already are.
Yeah.
But the code doesn't say we can or should, it's silent on it. So this code was sort of so old, it didn't mention solar, it didn't mention EV. Um.
Um.
And if there's any uses you think I've forgotten, by all means, please let me know, or if there's any you think that are in here that shouldn't be, let me know that too.
Yeah, I guess that was my concern, the, like, you know, is there a catchall? Um, and and I guess that's the description of the board. Uh, for things that may have been left out, but when you go super specific on things, then the absence of something becomes more glaring and more, less, less discretionary almost, right? It feels almost more intentional when you went super specific on, you know, twelve things and left out item thirteen versus.
Right. Well, this, in my, in my, the super specific are, in my opinion, where it needs that there's a different degree of review for some reason, like laundromats with water usage or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, no, I saw where you were right, you had separated them, which is.
It's not generic. Usage.
Two very different things, laundry and. I I was uh, impressed with your definition of bar, um, which is pretty, pretty convoluted, but but very, you know, it's like you tried to cover every single angle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the the second sentence there, which is quite preponderous, um, even if food is prepared or served on a premises, an establishment should be deemed a bar where any bar area contains more than one seat for every five table seats, or where the bar remains open for two or more hours for alcohol consumption after the normal menu, food services closed, or allows seated patrons to acquire beverages except by waiter or waitress.
I think this is existing, not my change.
Okay, well, it should say or does not allow seated patrons to acquire beverages except by waiter or waitress, or remains open later than midnight, or where any time the establishment registers entry to patient twenty-one.
Yeah, that that definition is actually, actually the exist, because it's in black, it's the existing definition.
I hear you, but I feel like it's saying opposite of what it means, and it needs to say you got, or does not allow, rather than.
Do you wanna take a shot at editing it for me, and just shoot, send me an email with it?
Uh, sure, I, what I did was, I couldn't figure out the the whole editing thing. So I did what I always do, which is I take screenshots, and then I write on it.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'll send you JPEGs.
As long as I can, yeah, or if you can, yeah.
Yeah.
If you can cut and paste it into something, there's, however you edit it.
I I'll send you that.
It's a short enough thing, if you change one or two words, I'll figure out which words you changed.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, but that's definitely, that clearly, that definition came about because of some combination of discussion, somewhere along the way.
I mean, I've been, almost everything in this code is a reaction to some discussion or some problem or some.
Yes, to some degree, not so much on the new ones, but did you, I'm sorry, yeah.
That was just one other little thing, like, um, so convenience market is defined as less than five thousand square feet, but grocery store doesn't have a size limit, so I guess, you know, that could be.
You know, the the convenience market, I, I asked Alex, like, what size are the, you know, the stores, the gas station kind of thing, because we kind of have to be honest, you're probably never gonna get a a gas station that isn't a convenience market anymore, you know, they just
Yeah.
ubiquitous, they go together, so, um, it's gonna always be so the five thousand is a placeholder, if we think it should be more or less, let me know. You know, I sort of looked at what they are now, what we have, and you know, we did, we modeled it on Stewart's, and I I said, how big is Stewart's? How many square feet?
I think that's fine, I think, I think we just should amend the the definition of the grocery store, so that it.
To have a limit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, more than five thou, I mean, I'm just thinking like Stewart's or convenient deli might be as large as the health food store in the Tops Market, right?
That's, that's true, yeah.
They're both, they're all really big, and and you'd call one a grocery and one a convenience, and I don't know that we would be applying different standards.
Well, they, they. Where they're allowed, I think, is the question.
Yeah.
Do you want them to be allowed just in commercial areas or in, you know, in other zoning districts?
Yeah, um, so convenience, I just wanna read.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of stuff, actually, I I wouldn't wanna re, you know, define health and nutrition as a convenience store.
We we could just say convenience markets include gasoline, and that would be the deciding, I mean, we've, we've said it may also include gasoline, because that's more considered a convenience market, whereas the health food store is more just a, uh, it's not a grocery store, it's yeah, it, well, it is, yeah.
There's some, lots, lots of communities are convenience markets.
Their entire group, yeah.
Is there anywhere a grocery store is allowed that a convenience store is not allowed?
I don't know, I don't talk like that, yeah, maybe this is.
If it's just a question of like, only certain places allow.
And that's gonna be a big part of the exercise, is we will need to eventually go through the Schedule A and look across the line and look for inconsistencies like that, and and say, where should it be allowed? And where should it be a site plan, and where should be a special use permit? And I think the village board is gonna really, they don't know it, but they're gonna look to you guys for a lot of guidance on that, I think, in terms of what should be allowed where, and what should be special use versus what is site planned. You know, all commercials should almost always be a site plan, unless it's a very small change, you know? Things like, you know, adding a dumpster enclosure, you know, that would be, do you guys wanna see that or not? Uh, you know, it, so, but if they're gonna build a new addition on a on a store, you wanna see that, so.
Okay. I just sent you another one.
Okay.
For dog park, it should be use of private land rather than the private use of land.
Okay. Yep. All editorial comments accepted, please, please. Um, what I was trying to differentiate though, in that a government can build a dog park if they want without going through zoning, but a private dog park, which could exist. There's a lot of.
There's one on thirty-two by uh, by Morello Farm there, that that like Airbnb made a little village park.
Yeah.
Where is that? Um.
It's fenced in on the the west side.
Going north on thirty-two.
On the left-hand side, it's like, it's not Airbnb, but it's like the little inn there.
It's in the town, but it's, it's a.
Standing as you can take it over there.
Interesting.
I thought it was a dog training.
Yeah, that's a drug training, that's the old uh, mountain roll school. Is now, and then it was Little Explorers before they moved, and.
Turn it up, but that's by Morello Farm, anyway.
Oh, oh, it's a different one, I'm sorry, I thought.
Talking thirty-two, south or north?
Did you have other sacs?
Wait, thirty-two, south or north?
No, no, it's happening.
South, okay.
Um, I don't have any other stuff in the definition section, did, Rachel, did you have anything like related to definitions?
I I did have a few things, um, one was the uh, invasive species. And I'm wondering here, does this give the village board the power to designate an invasive species? And if it does, I would like to submit some criteria for that, because.
I don't know that we were saying the village board had the power, but I I can look at the definition again, I think we were basically saying, from what I understand, there is a state invasive species list, and that we can enforce that list.
Okay, it says or by designation of the village board, so.
Well, so the village, I guess we are saying that.
So if you're gonna designate something as an invasive species, I'd like to put a few words in there for it.
Okay.
And then.
Yeah, I think we were just giving them the ability, and again, these are copied from other examples, so they may or may not want that authority, uh, but if they're gonna have it, I I'm happy to hear what you're gonna offer.
Absolutely, because they're immigrants. Anyhow, um, the other thing, I would, I wanted something a little more specific about the outdoor lighting, although I think that it was just that did a great job of like, a lot of these things, because you're using, I went to the Farm Based Code training, and I'm like, yeah, he's putting pictures in there, you have pictures of the sun.
Oh, you're you're jumping ahead.
I'm jumping a little bit, but I'm just saying, for for outdoor lighting, it just says that it has a bad effect on the flora and fauna, and I'd like it to be a little more specific, because when you look at that, you're like, who cares about that?
Okay.
But outdoor lighting negatively affects nocturnal pollinators, because it disrupt, disrupts their navigation, and it makes them more susceptible to predation, like something like that.
Send me that sentence, and I'm happy to add it in there. Yeah, let's just, in just, but we we haven't gotten that far yet, but there, I've written a very extensive outdoor lighting code, because we, probably the majority of our complaints we get at code enforcement is about outdoor lighting.
Mm-hmm, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, surprisingly, but.
When it's there, you notice, oh, they have a T-back lighting, that that time I brought it.
Yeah, yeah, it's like that, same.
Which looks much better than.
Yeah, um, yeah, it is. So we got through Article One, I don't know if we really talked much about Article Two and Three, so, you know, and it's nine thirty, so you probably wanna end, but, and don't worry, the village board is moving incredibly, and we're on a meeting once a month right now, because I can't come to their first meeting of the month, because I have county planning board that night, so I've only been, I'm meeting with them tomorrow. And again, once in December, and then I won't be meeting with them again, probably until January or February, because it's, you know, reorg and everything else going on, so, uh, this is a this is a marathon.
We'll just appreciate its representation.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
I think you want to jump on that.
Chris can feedback, tell that planning board.
You really gotta recruit members of this board.
Yeah.
Any help you can bring, I I.
I have two more meetings, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, there's one potential lead that you know, I I reached out to after being introduced, um, we'll see, that, that'd be great, thumbs up.
But thank you very much, you're you're, couldn't do it without your feedback, you know, and I can explain, and I I don't take it personally, I I mean, I may disagree, but I don't take it personally, so.
Oh, no, there's nothing personal about it, really, I mean, we appreciate the incredibly thorough, thorough job you do.
I appreciate your insight about the family, because we we spent easily an hour plus on that. And I think I probably spent about four hours to get through the original definition.
I'll move it into adjourned meeting.
Thanks.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Okay, listen.